So here it is, John with you. Got to unmute. There you go.
Would you like me to start?
Yeah, so you have, you have your, you have a quorum, so you can begin.
Okay. Is, is John here?
He's with him.
He is with you, sorry, okay.
And I am recording.
Thank you. Okay, welcome, everybody. We are meeting Monday, May 17th at 5 o'clock, the Conservation Commission of Waterville Valley, and we have a quorum. And we'll do a quick roll call. Martha? Martha here. John?
John Racine, ex officio.
And Erit Levy here. And now we'll open the public hearing with Mark to present.
All right, let me, just get my, sorry, it was on the wrong screen here. So can everyone see that? No?
Not yet.
Not yet, all right. Oh dear. Hold on, sorry, technical difficulties. How about now?
No.
No, still not, okay. Come on. How about now? Okay, so, I'm gonna go here, and what can you see?
Public hearing, go ahead.
Just the slide, yeah?
Just one, yes.
Okay, good. All right, so this, this is the required public hearing. Before accepting or purchasing property in accordance with the state statutes, a conservation commission must hold a public hearing that's been noticed, just like any other land use hearing. The object here is to take public comment, following the public hearing, you can deliberate and take a vote on whether or not to accept the parcel or not. Conservation Commission has the authority to accept this land. You have to go through this public hearing process, and then you have to get the concurrence of the Board of Selectmen once you've decided that it's something that you want to do. Okay? The parcel that we are talking about is, whoops, sorry. The parcel that we are talking about is map 105 lot 32, 1032C actually. It's the parcel that is next to the bridge along the Snow's Brook. Okay, so it's 32C on this map. You can deliberate after the hearing. You deliberate, decide whether or not to purchase the property. If you decide to move ahead, we can put it on as an agenda item for May 26th. And the Board of Selectmen can then concur with you or not, you can continue the negotiations. With the Board's approval, you can finalize the purchase and sale agreement and complete fundraising and complete the purchase. I think I've shared with all of you that the Waterville Company is in the process of finalizing their dissolution, so they do want to try to close on this as quickly as possible. The Selectmen have already talked about be, concurring with the purchase of the property by the Conservation Commission. Now, once you do the purchase, then the Commission may put covenants on the property. You manage the property as you deem appropriate. Okay, so whether or not, whether or not the Commission decides to ask for a rezoning of the property under green belt, as I've mentioned to some, that's something that you can do. You can vote to put covenants on the property, get those recorded, we can go through those legal requirements with Town Council, but you do have the authority to manage it the way that the Commission sees fit. And then while we're taking public comment, we just asked that you state your name for the record, so we have it on the recording, so we can do minutes. State whether or not you're in favor of the purchase or opposed to it, and make your comments through Erit as the Chair of the Board. And then we can do the deliberation and the decision, so we're at the, I'm gonna stop sharing and we can see each other and then go, if it's all right with you, Erit, or if anybody has, doesn't have any questions, we can stop sharing here and basically begin your public comment period.
Okay. Very good.
I did admit, we have Thomas Cooper that I've, I've had in the waiting room, and I have accepted him into admitting him into the meeting, so hopefully he can join us soon here. But I'll turn it over to you, Erit, whatever you would like to do.
Okay, we have to wait till he presents himself by phone or by video? Okay.
Rich? Rich, do you have any comment or just listening?
No, just listening, I'm moving around, packing, so, I'm listening to everything.
Okay, good. And Lisa, do you have any comments?
Yes, I have, well, I don't know much about it, who's the seller?
The seller is the Waterville Company.
Okay.
And the purchaser is the Conservation Commission. It's the Town of Waterville Valley through the Conservation Commission.
So is it close to the Golden Heights?
This is the last parcel, the parcel closest to Snow's Brook in the Moose Run subdivision. So it is between Golden Heights Road and Snow's Brook.
Thank you.
And it is adjacent to and touching the, the Brook itself.
So it would go under the green belt, maybe?
Well, that's, that's up to the Commission, that's one way they could handle it, is to get it rezoned, it is currently zoned village commercial. But it could be rezoned as green belt, which would match the rest of the land on the other end of Corcoran Pond all the way down to the, along Snow's Brook, all the way down to the Mad River.
I have a question. Just looking at the map, the boundary line kind of zigzags around the Snow's Brook, is it, is the official line Snow's Brook?
It's the high water mark of Snow's Brook. It's like that on all water bodies.
Okay, all right, so it's, so it kind of sometimes goes across, I just didn't know the map, that the zoning map or the parcel map was 100% accurate or not. So it's the high water mark?
Well, it's not the, it's not an official survey, but it is based on a survey that was done for the Moose Run subdivision.
Okay, so the, the boundary is based on the high water mark?
Well, that's, it's, I think the term that they use is the normal high water mark of that Brook.
Okay, so, I mean, does the, the Brook itself belong on a particular parcel, does the Brook itself then belong to what's Waterville Place? Or is it a separate entity in itself?
It's in between the two, it is not owned.
It is not owned by either parcel, okay, got it.
So did you say it is or isn't adjacent to Waterville Place?
It is across the Brook, it is not touching Waterville Place.
The Brook separates the two parcels?
I believe it does, I will check the tax map to make sure of that.
Okay, so I guess I never really considered that the Brook itself wasn't on a particular piece of land.
Right, and if the, let me just look. Hold on just a second, I just need to zoom in here. No, this is showing it in the middle of the Brook except for one small, so it is a straight line between 32C and Waterville Place, it is a straight property line.
Right, so that's why I wasn't sure how accurate that particular map was.
That, that is correct, that is accurate. So it is actually a surveyed line.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
So the Brook isn't part of it, it is shared by?
In, in some of it, it is shared by, and in some of it, it is completely on this lot.
Okay, and does this particular stream, I forget, and maybe other people would like to know, does this particular Brook have any water setbacks or restrictions?
No, it does not.
Okay, so that's also something that we could, that's something we could add, we could add to that, at least on our side of the, how does that?
You could, if, I think if you wanted to, sure. I don't know how we would do that, we'd have to ask Town Council what the legal mechanism would be. It is not subject to Shoreland Protection.
Yeah, that's the terminology I was looking for. Or we can put it all under conservation, or, I mean, there's a lot of choices about what we could do.
That's correct.
Okay, and if, if, if we do buy, if we do buy this land and we do want to for some reason, put it under full conservation as opposed to just green belt, is that something that the Conservation Commission can do on their own, or do we have to get public input, public opinion approval, or something like that, for that?
I would, that would be, that was the question I was talking about, that we would need to check with Town Council what the process for that is.
Okay.
I don't know if you can simply vote as the Commission to place it in conservation, or whether it would be a town meeting vote, or some other mechanism.
Okay. And we could probably just reach out to the New Hampshire Conservation Commission, they might be able to.
Yep, they can probably help you, and Town Council would actually draft whatever language would be necessary.
Okay.
John, you got a question?
We're not muted, okay, good. So I think, if I'm not mistaken, the Cross Country Ski Trail goes right through that property?
There is a cross-country ski trail shown, yes.
Okay, good, I like it.
And remember, under, under the green belt zoning district trails and you know, that sort of thing are, recreational uses are allowed on the parcel, however, buildings other than gazebos, no buildings are allowed on that parcel, so the actual green belt rezoning would, would place a lot of restrictions on the use of the parcel.
Right, it may be sufficient, yeah. Is that a town term, or is that a state term, I've never heard that outside of this area?
Green Belt is a town zoning district in the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
And so you could potentially ask, and that, that decision to rezone it would be at town meeting, right, it would be a change in the zoning map. And you could ask for that to be done. And then if down the road, for whatever reason, that zoning district goes away, or some other thing happens that you don't like what is allowed in the green belt zone, you could always move towards other easements or covenants, or whatever you want to do.
Right, it's my understanding that a conservation, a switch to a conserved land is more permanent than green belt, which is a zoning district that can change from time to time.
Yeah. But the green belt does give you more local control and, and does allow you to change. The easements, I think, are a lot more difficult to change, conservation easements.
Right.
Would be a lot more difficult to change. And because it's current, or because it is town-owned, is already, it's already gonna be removed from the tax rolls.
Right.
So putting it in something like current use, or anything like that, really doesn't make.
Well, it doesn't make the land requirements for current use, I thought you need 10 acres for.
Yeah, you need, you need a larger parcel. You're right.
Okay, okay, is there anyone out there that wishes to make a comment? Any more questions?
Run around.
It sounds like it, and John's the only member from Planning Board.
No, we have one more.
Oh.
Ashley.
Rich.
Rich is.
Rich is here.
Rich is an ex officio.
Rich is ex officio on the planning board.
Okay.
We really have three. Three folks.
All right, so at this point.
So the question now, if you want to close the public hearing, you can deliberate?
Yes.
Or you can do whatever else you would like to do.
All right, so let's, Martha, if you're in agreement, we'll close the public hearing?
That sounds good to me.
Me too.
Okay. Thank you, so we'll do that. And deliberate.
Okay, so the public hearing is closed at 5:18?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so.
So what's the difference between open and close, meaning we not accepting any other comments, I mean, we're still recording, do we, does?
You are still in a meeting, and the meeting was posted that, you know, this, the land purchase is the purpose of it, so you're, you're okay to move forward to deliberate, and by deliberate, I just mean the conversation is now the Boards, and you can make motions and whatever, doesn't mean you can't take public comment or ask
Okay.
questions, but, but it's intended to be your conversation about it.
All right, that sounds fine.
About whether or not to do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Are we, are we prepared to talk about this and, and, and vote on it today, or do we want to have a, a separate meeting to do that, I mean, obviously, we're kind of running out of time, if we want to get in an excellent meeting.
I think we're leaning towards deliberating and voting on this today, so we could meet in front of the Select Board, is that right?
Yeah, I think that that would be best, and then you can tell, we can pass that on to the Waterville Company, that it'll be on the agenda for the 26th.
Okay, okay.
Do you have a question?
No, I was just gonna say, I don't, I think we should just move on with it, and don't delay it any further, and just keep going.
Sounds good, sounds good.
All right, so Martha, you may have a question on this, on the use of this property? If I remember.
Um, I don't think, I don't think that's a subject for this particular case, I mean, I agree, we should, I personally agree, we should purchase it. What we end up doing with it in the future is after purchase, obviously, I'm, I'm not gonna say we shouldn't buy it unless we do XYZ. You know, anything that gets, happens with the land, it will have to be, you know, a majority vote, and, and follow all those, you know, steps there, thereby. I don't know if the, I, I did post on Facebook that we have raised, from what I can see, about $5,500 so far, so we're a little over halfway to our goal. It would be wonderful.
Also, we got another check today, so we're up to 5,600 now.
Okay, good. So it would be, you know, it would be nice to be able to get the full 10,000, but we do have some discretionary money in our conservation fund. So for, I was, as I was talking to Mark, and when I was asking questions earlier, I thought it would look better and or probably be easier if we took the funds that we've raised so far, the funds that we have in our own, you know, discretionary fund, and, and purchase it that way, rather than having a backup from the town to fill in until we raise the rest, does that make sense?
Yeah, between the discretionary monies and the, and what you have had donated so far, you have enough to. But, but it is, I think it's still good to be out there talking about it and trying to raise additional, so that you can maintain that fund for other projects or other.
Right. Right, I mean, I don't want to say we, we don't need any more money, because we do, we just, we're basically draining our bank account in order to expedite this and get it happening faster, rather than waiting months for the money to come in.
Or having the town backstop you, so.
Right, right.
May I say?
Yes, go ahead.
May I say something? I don't know what was going on, I just came into it. And so who's buying it, is it a society, is it the town? An individual? Is it supposed to be for the town?
The Town of Waterville Valley's Conservation Commission is buying it. So it will belong to the town, but the Conservation Commission will be controlling it, managing it.
You talk about raising the money, so is town, town pay for it, for the tax or something?
So not, not.
Or is it a voluntary assessment?
We're, we're collecting funds, contributions, donations, and we also have a small fund from the Conservation Commission Fund that's paying for this property.
Yes, so it's no tax dollars, Lisa. It's, it's going to be the Conservation Commission's money, or the donations that they have collected, that is going to fund the purchase.
So, any idea how much effort it is?
It's $10,000 is the, is the price, we have a conditional purchase and sale agreement for the property. So all they need, all we need to do is to get the Selectmen to finalize going along with the Conservation Commission's decision, and then we can, we can close on the property.
Is it about half an acre, how big is it?
I believe it is 1.8, almost 1.8 acres. 1.79 acres.
1.8, half of it.
Right.
Yeah.
For $10,000.
And it's all.
Yeah.
It's all conservation land.
Yeah, but it couldn't be used for building anything anyway.
No, no.
No, but the abutting people that are near it, they could purchase it and do what they, whatever they want, other than building. So, so right now, if we, if we buy it, we can leave it and choose it to do what we want, right now, there's a multi-purpose trail going through it. So there's a lot of things that we can control and keep it out of the building.
Okay.
And there's, there's a lot of valuable wetlands right there, and they, they help filter the water that goes into Snow's Brook, which then goes into Corcoran's Pond, so it's, 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 you know, wetlands are not good for building purposes, but they're excellent for wildlife and for water filtration and keeping the water clean before it goes into Corcoran's Pond, so as, as the Conservation Commission, I mean, for me personally, that, that I see as a, as a valuable asset.
Yes, me too.
And I think in fairness, though, when you look at the zoning on that lot, it could, I'm sure that an engineer could find a buildable piece of that 1.8 acres. So it's not like it's, we, I, I have not looked at it, and I don't think the towns looked at it in enough detail to definitively say that it's an unbuildable lot, there are a lot of wetlands in there. However, I think you could get a building envelope on some section of that parcel. So it is a, a building lot in that sense, right? And if it's a commercial entity that were built there, because it's village commercial currently, there's no minimum lot size. So it, it is a parcel, I think, because of the high wetlands content and the location of it adjacent to the Brook, that we really do want to protect that parcel. And I, I think it's a great idea, and I think that for $10,000, it's, it's probably a very good buy, because especially with the price of land nowadays. You know, there would definitely be a lot of work to do, but I bet you could shoehorn a building onto it.
Yeah, probably on the north side, closer to the trails.
Exactly.
You know, there's some possibility in there, but.
And maintaining that trail, the trails on that parcel will be good for the town as well. Right? Because those are just trail easements. And somebody buys it and doesn't want the trail across the parcel where they are located right now, could be a lot to change it.
All right, we lose a trail. Yes, so this way.
I think overall, it's a good deal for.
So Martha, are we ready to make a motion to vote on this land purchase? Go right ahead. Okay. Can I do that, or can someone else do that, make a motion? All right. I'll make a motion to proceed with this land purchase, specifically map 105, lot 10-32C. Rich, you're back.
John Racine, I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Yes. Aye.
And I'm, I'm voting for Ed too. Roll call, Martha?
Martha, plant, aye.
John, Racine?
John Racine, ex officio, aye.
Erit Levy, Chair, aye. And do I vote for Ed too?
You can't, you can't by state law.
Okay.
So it's, it's three to zero, that's a quorum of the Commission.
Very good.
So you, you did in fact decide to do that, so.
Motion is passed, thank you.
Any thoughts, comments, Rich?
No, I'm listening all along, and I agree with what you said, Mark, 100%. It's quite a, quite a good buy. Even if something would, even if it was completely unbuildable, it would be a good buy, but for that amount of money, how could you not buy 1.7 acres adjacent to a Brook? So, great, great.
This is exciting, this is our first purchase.
And that's why we're, we're so confused.
Congratulations, everyone, yes.
There you go, that Conservation Commission out there being a Conservation Commission.
We have something to conserve.
There you go.
Yeah.
There you go, okay, so I'm gonna, I will make a note to make sure that this is an agenda item for the Selectmen's meeting on the 26th.
Okay.
And we will, we will go from there. And we will, we will go from there.
Perfect. Alright, so do you want us to be present at that meeting or not?
The selectmen are meeting in person. Um if if you don't wanna come to town hall, uh we can send you uh the Zoom link.
Okay.
And you can um you can join in to the meeting. Please just email me and let me know.
Okay.
Is that at three P M, Mark?
It is at three P M on the twenty-sixth.
Okay. I'll go grab it.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, make sure that we're here. Okay, privilege of the floor. Is there anything else need need to be said?
What do we got, conflict?
I have surgery.
Oh.
Okay, uh Martha, if you can attend, that would be good. Okay, I think I can.
I'll attend.
Okay.
Oh, actually.
Uh no, I need you there.
And I'm sure that you can talk to Ed and make sure that he might be able to attend.
You know what? I I'll bring my computer wherever we go. I'll be able to at least speak with the computer.
Yep. So we can do that. So I'll, thank you. Um would you like to set up a meeting date for our next Conservation Commission meeting?
We would.
Alright.
I was wondering if we um should make it sooner than later to gloat about the land purchase?
To gloat? For all of our viewers. Champagne.
Otherwise, we would just meet what in a few months.
Yeah, there's nothing urgent for June. So unless Mark tells me otherwise.
No, um what what day are you looking at?
Well, we don't need it in June, correct? Or do you?
Well, I if if you could meet, plan to meet on the either the twenty-eighth or the thirty-first?
Or June.
No, of of May, cuz we want to close. I wanna make sure that we can close.
Isn't the thirty-first Memorial Day?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it is. You're absolutely right. So let's do this. Let's um let's have the selectman's meeting.
Yep.
Once we have the selectman's meeting, I will, in the interim, I'll talk to Bob Fries.
Okay.
And um find out when he actually wants to sign everything.
Alright.
Um because, and I will find out from town council if a member of the Conservation Commission has to sign that, or whether I can sign it um as the town manager.
Alright.
You may not have to be involved in the actual closing.
Alright.
Itself.
Okay. That sounds fine.
As a commission.
Alright, so the next date is TBD, to be determined.
Okay, well, we'll do it that way.
Okay. Alright, if there are no other comments.
I have one.
Okay.
Lisa? John here. I just wanted to thank you very much for joining us today. You're the only one of the planning board.
But I'm interested.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Alright, well, good, good job, and um you know, at at least we're out there. We will um, we will have this on uh YouTube.
Yes.
And uh available for folks to watch and hopefully get their questions answered if uh if they have any.
And we'd appreciate your donations. Please, please.
There you go.
I don't have any, any email of you.
Oh, for me?
Yes.
Oh, oh, it probably just shows my name. Well, you you can, you can send it, you can send a check to the Town of Waterville.
I will, Lisa.
I don't know what about first.
Oh, you wanna know more?
First, yeah. I'm just, I'm just talking, I'm just heard about it today. I didn't.
Oh, you're kidding. Oh, my goodness.
Lisa, I will send you Martha's email, okay? And because I have both of your emails, so I'll make sure that you both can communicate. Okay?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Alright.
Okay, anything else before we adjourn?
Nope, that's all I have. Rich, can you hang on here? Um I just need to talk to you before you head south, please.
Okay, safe driving, Rich. So this
Thank you.
This meeting adjourned at five thirty-five.
Okay, five thirty-five.